I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I made a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we're moving along to a public hearing.
Is it service regal?
Yeah. Okay. Good evening. In our last meeting, it was requested that the town conduct a survey of residents to see what trash services, what services have been done in its entirety, whether going trash, trash recycling, yard waste. There should be a trash survey result sheet inside your packet. For a town of maybe sixteen, eighteen hundred customers, we all received one hundred and seventeen responses. It's a very low count in some of those numbers we're told, number of people that will be served. But the breakdown is for the one hundred and seventeen folks, eighteen only wanted garbage cans, twenty-two wanted garbage and recycling, fifty-five wanted garbage, recycling and yard waste, and then sixteen wanted garbage and yard waste. One, two of them just wanted a yard waste can. I don't know what they're gonna do, I don't know. And four people declined answering. So, we don't have a result there. So, out of one hundred and seventeen total missions, it looks like majority of them by double wants all three cans. Or they want to pick and choose what they want to receive at their residence. That should be up to them. I don't know about the service we're gonna offer at this time. So, looking forward to coming.
Does the board have any type of recommendations?
Do you wanna open it for anybody that wants to talk about the service?
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a, for the resident, well, to anyone to discuss the services. Is there any recommendations from the board?
You wanna close the public hearing?
No, go ahead now and close the public hearing, no one came forward.
Now, I wanna ask you a question, answer me. How many did you say, out of one hundred and seventeen?
Yes, ma'am.
You had how many, four, three trash cans?
Eighteen wanted trash cans only. This sheet should be in your packet.
And it might be, I'm just not looking at it.
Oh, yeah.
Garbage and recycling cans only is twenty-two. All three cans, garbage, recycling and yard waste is fifty-five.
Thank you.
And garbage and yard waste only, no recycling is sixteen. And yard waste only is two.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. There is also a price sheet inside of your packet that shows all the current pricing through all the vendors themselves. It gets trash service, bi-monthly recycling and bi-monthly yard waste and the total amount, all of it.
Does the board have any questions?
I went out in my own neighborhood and asked everybody that I ran into and it was, just like you did, it was very mixed. I don't know of any of them that sent in anything to you.
Right.
But it would've been nice to have gotten our whole homeowners association involved. That would've been right many people. But I didn't see all of them, I saw about plenty of them.
Okay.
And the majority of the people that I talked with, they were leaning more towards garbage and yard waste.
Okay.
When they have found, they have seen the same thing everybody else has seen. If you're paying for a dumpster for recycling and it's going into the same truck, they couldn't care less about paying for that service. They don't feel like they're getting it, no matter who separates it. If it goes into the same truck, they said, well, then all of my stuff can go into the same can. That's my two cents.
So, the majority of the people you think on average would take that garbage and yard waste?
That's, that's just in my neighborhood.
Right.
It sounds like me, I, we didn't get one percent response out of the community, right? Not point two percent. But out of point two percent, about forty-seven percent said they wanted all three services. All three services reported. Look at the numbers, no matter which bid we go with, that's on this sheet that we go right here, it's all, we can still provide all three services at a lower cost than what we're currently paying based on the bids. With such a low number of people responding and only a two-week timeframe for them to respond from our last, my recommendation would be not to make any changes to the cans unless you just look at the bid prices as they are and move forward that way.
Oh, I'm just doing some math. Cause I imagine all the contracts were increased every year, up three percent, something like that.
All contracts that I've received are basically, will increase mainly due to the consumer price index increase.
Typically, when we get presentations from planning and everything else out here, we get a staff recommendation. And I guess I'd look to y'all for that because y'all are the ones that answer the complaint phone calls and y'all are the ones that have to deal with the angry customers. And so, y'all have put out the bid, I guess y'all had conversations with all the contractors that put it in. They're all relatively close and all four are cheaper than what we're currently paying from my understanding. So, I guess from my standpoint, I'm looking at y'all for a recommendation on who y'all think would best serve you as a staff so y'all don't get chewed out every week and then obviously best serve our citizens as end users.
I understand. It's hard for me to make a recommendation myself because I've dealt with all four of our vendors themselves. Like I said, the prices are all very, very reasonable. You look at the contract terms, all of them except for one or five here.
What I saw today, correct me if I'm wrong, was we had an amendment to a one-year term. They came through email today, is that correct?
We, staff did not receive that.
Staff did not receive?
No, we did not.
Okay, so that's not been reviewed by anybody?
No, it has not.
Okay.
And I, plus I didn't receive.
Okay, alright, and so, and then... And then I guess my other things are just the nuances, the stuff that we like to have, right? Because I mean, what you're looking at is the difference of these vendors or all four of these vendors want all for backyard service. And if not, then I'm not interested in the vendors, right? Cause we have lots of skinny citizens that depend on that pretty backyard service, right? I can tell you from rental property ownership, I can tell you it's nice that I can throw a couch out on the front street and I don't have to worry about holding somewhere and they can call the town and have somebody pick it up. And those are nuances from, that benefit me, I'm not gonna lie, I probably benefit other property owners.
Right.
And without us seeing the actual contract or anything, I guess my question, how is that handled?
As far as services like that, we are actually lucky as we have three vendors sitting here. If the board have any questions directly for them that I cannot answer.
So, we know backdoor was available for GFL, it's available for Carolina Set Two.
Carolina Trash.
Carolina, I mean, sorry, Carolina Trash and Republic, correct? And then Bolt?
GFL was Waste Industries on here?
Well, that's GFL, yeah, that's Waste Industries. And then Bolt Pickup was available through GFL Republic, correct?
We did not price it in this, that was not part of our P.
But you do have it?
We can look at it, but like I said, on the spot here, it wasn't in the RFP.
And Bolt in Carolina Trash, y'all do, do?
Yeah, we can do Bolt Pickup, the bid just has for residential cans though, so.
Yes, we excluded Bolt Pickup, we didn't know where it was gonna end up. In response to a lot of the questions we received when we found out that we couldn't bid Bolt Pickup because we didn't know what the volumes were gonna be and the vendors didn't feel comfortable offering our prices or something they couldn't fully understand.
Mayor, can you say something?
Okay, ma'am.
My name is Norma Yanez, I work for GFL and Philman had referred to the letter about the one-year extension. And I'm sorry, I'm kinda putting this at the very end of it, so, but from my understanding, we never received the notification to cancel the contract. It was supposed to have been extended for two years, we didn't get notification. We offered to do it for one year, just to give us a chance to make sure our service is what you want. And also, we offered to put a performance on in for that one year. Just do it for one year, forget about the two years that we believe that we're entitled to. We'll do it for one year and then at the end, I'll give you a lot of time in this one year to figure out what exactly you want. Cause like Republic said, I don't believe you had Bolt Pickup in the RFP that everybody responded to because it was just picking up trash in the park. So, that'll give you time to look at those kind of things. And if you really decide what you wanna do, it'll give you more time to ask your citizens if what they want. As far as the yard waste, I got this contract maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, I was the one that originally did it. The only reason I really remember it because I was here on the night that y'all were deciding how many sheeps we would force and for your livestock ordinance. But I do remember for the yard waste, it was started because of the storm drains. You were having lots of troubles with storm drains and it was because people were putting their grass clippings out on the curb or they were blocking up your storm drain. So, just to give you a little bit of that and just to make sure you understand about the one-year, the offer of the one-year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kim, going back to you, I know we've been discussing this thing, I said I didn't want it to slip up on us about eight months ago. Now, are we coming up right now and saying that we didn't honor the contract?
I told Jeremy Freeman, who was our person, who no longer works there, I told him on March the fifth that we were gonna go out for bid. And so, I do not believe we have sent a letter, but we have, we told them in March that we were going to go put this out for bid.
Shall we back that up?
I'm working on it.
The document pretty much says you have to send a letter, and that's the case. So, if there was no letter sent?
It just says in writing.
It said it has to be sent to us in writing, what if Jeremy, what if he had fallen out, you know, two months ago? I mean, that's why you have to, we had to send you a letter, we were gonna leave the town within ninety days. So, you know, we're just trying to honor what's in our documents, in our agreement. And we think by offering just a one-year instead of a two-year, we think that's a good compromise. And like I said, we, I think we even gave you different pricing. Just making sure everybody understands that.
I'm sorry, you said the document was sent today?
Um, I think it was, like I said...
It was emailed today, though.
It was emailed, I think, to the board today.
We did not get it.
Okay, well, I...
So, I mean, there again, and who sent it? Did you send it or did Jennifer send it?
Well, you were, Jennifer was told she couldn't come back, so...
Jennifer was not told she could not come back. Jennifer, we had a conversation with her boss, he said that she was not professional at the meeting, that she was not told that she could not come back.
Okay, well, that was, well, he told her that relayed that she was not a good fit for the town and not to come back.
But I just wanna make sure it's clear it did not come from the town it came from.
Sincerely, Norma.
I'm Norma Yanez, that's...
Has she ever wrote this letter?
Well, my neighbor, I know what it says.
There is the letter that was sent.
Have y'all not seen this?
We did.
I have just not received this?
I, we, I didn't, I didn't even know about the letter until the meeting started when Dean told me.
I've got it now.
I sent it to...
She had forwarded it to me as we were all sitting down.
So, the letter that you sent to, or whoever you sent this to, the guy is no longer with them?
He was fired.
Okay, well, did you, was this done in writing or was it done in...
We had a, we had a, we were talking about spring cleanup and he asked me to call him. And so, we talked about it over the phone. And I'm going back through emails to see if there was any other discussion. But we also had a discussion with Jennifer when the RFP went out because she called upset that she didn't get a copy of it, which we all, we put them online. And I told her at that time that we would not be, but she chose, she called as well, so. They had noticed, I mean...
Have you seen that number?
Not necessarily.
They had noticed and we told...
I did, I did with them personally and I told them to come pick it up. And we didn't do anything in writing, they said, oh, you've got a contract. I said, BS, got the contract, they couldn't pull this up, they couldn't pull the contract up, but they came in and made all kinds of agreements.
You're talking about our agreement?
Yes, ma'am, GFL, not with the town.
Yeah, we had an agreement because I've seen it, I've got a copy of it, not with me, but...
He's talking about his personal business.
Oh, I told you, not with the town.
My recommendation is, we've talked about it internally, our recommendation as a staff is Carolina Trash. But if you want to give us, and tell me if I can't do this, but give us to go ahead to have those conversations and let us work out GFL and then we can put, we can keep you guys up to date on the contract itself so we're not sitting here going back and forth with Ms. Norma in an open meeting. We can talk to her, me and I can get together with them and we can have that discussion. But then also give us the option to move forward with Carolina Trash if we don't come into some hinge with GFL. That would be my recommendation.
And this contract is up in...
December thirty-first, so we have to make, yeah, we've gotta at least give somebody notice if we're gonna be moving forward with them so they can get trash free.
Are you saying to negotiate with the contract, the two you mentioned?
I believe there's a chance that we might do, and breach the contract.
She's not wrong, Mrs. Yanis.
She's not wrong.
It says that you have to give writing thirty, ninety days prior to the expiration of the then-current term, which is December thirty-first is the expiration.
Best and worst-case scenario, what happens if we breach the contract?
Best case is they just say, okay, well, sorry, we couldn't continue our business relationship.
Worst case?
And they sue you for specific performance.
For another five years, or another two years?
It extends two years.
But they've offered us one year, as of today.
Apparently, they had.
The rate on here that they've offered that one year at, is that the same rate that's on here now?
It's not on the letter.
If the rate is not on the letter, right?
It's not on the letter that was sent to you today.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I think the new rate's not the rate that they are on.
But the contract, the new contract that you're offering us would be for one year?
For one year only.
For this?
Yes.
Cam, what was your recommendation again, let me hear that again?
My recommendation is to, the staff recommendation is Carolina Trash. So, it's to allow us to have conversations with Carolina Trash and with GFL and see if we can get, move forward with getting out of the contract with GFL, but talking about getting a contract with Carolina Trash. And then we'll bring it back to you guys in November for consent.
So, what's the pleasure of the board for this?
Question for me, or?
No, what's the pleasure of it?
I wanna say this, and we'll go whichever way you want, and I'm not gonna say I like this option, but I think this is the safest option for us, is the fact that they have offered potentially through an email that's not been reviewed by attorney or staff today, another one, a one-year extension at the lowest rate of the bids that we have received. And the question that we're in breach of contract concerns me. So, if we can take that two-year extension and agree to do it for one more year and then maybe go out the bid like we were supposed to and make, we know, make sure we notice like we're supposed to that we might revisit this in another year. But if we're not planning on taking services, they are the cheapest bid that we've got in our hand right now, whether it be for one year or two years. My fear is if we do it, I feel like GFL's big enough, maybe I'm wrong, but if they find us in breach of contract, we're gonna end up paying a new company in two years of service potentially to another, to an old contract if we breach, I don't know, I'm not an attorney.
If you wanna exceed it another year, we can do another survey and then we can put it out in March like we had originally planned and then have a little more time.
A more specific survey? I think there's a lot of loopholes in the survey that we could have. Because people didn't know, people I talked to didn't know what they were voting on. They're like, which one's most important, trash is always most important when they see it. So, I think we need more specifics, more than point two percent of our population.
What do you think, Kai?
I think that's a fine suggestion.
You think that's what?
I think that's a fine suggestion.
I make a motion that we give you consent to renegotiate that to the one-year contract to these prices.
With the performance part?
With the performance part, which was offered by email today.
At the rates, I don't, you're not looking what I'm looking at, but I think these rates were submitted by y'all. So, just since you're here, we're talking about this right now, we can talk after the meeting, on a subsequent date, but...
And I would say this...
These revised rates, right, not an extension of...
No, let's think about revised rates for one year. I can just do a whole new agreement for one year or I can amend it for one year with all the different changes, whatever, when you like.
Okay.
We're working that.
I would like to say one more thing, I'm not anybody that just play a wing on here, but I just wanna say to all the other vendors, I apologize because I don't feel like the bid, the way that RFP's put out probably is basic, that's another pretty obvious one, I appreciate y'all sitting here for three weeks maybe, if it doesn't go unnoticed and maybe, maybe something will change in the future. That's all I'm gonna say, I don't know what else to say beyond that. But I feel like my answer tied, at least on my, my... So, my motion is...
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Let me ask something, my email is maxinehollis64@yahoo.com, so I need to get a new thing that I can feature.
Ma'am, would you like to repeat your email address?
It's Maxine Hollis, all lowercase letters coming together, six to four, at yahoo.com. Thank you.
Okay, now, under Old Business, Maxime for the discussion on the location of the pickleball court.
So, bad head toe soccer, so we're gonna stay in for it. I think you talked about this at the last meeting, so what we're trying to get done is four pickleball courts put in either at Biz Park or Nance Park. Kind of what we're coming to y'all for is the recommendation on location. So, I think in your packets you should have plans for both parks. If you have a chance to look over those. We also dropped off the bids. And that's, that's the bids, there's also...
There's a plan in the back of those. They printed weird on the board package, you don't have the...
Yeah. But there's plans at both parks. So, on the plans, you can see there's eight, we're only doing four right now, that's in the first phase. So, what kind of we're looking at, you can see the layout. Both locations are good as far as I'm concerned. One thing about Nance is there is lots and bathroom facilities there already, so that would be something we wouldn't have to supply. Dr. Biz is gonna fund the project, but that's, that's just the courts itself. So, and we have a commitment, a commitment left in hand for that project. So, like I said, we're looking at, I guess, the recommendation on location.
Does the owner have a preference?
He does not.
He's happy with either one.
Yeah, he'd give either one, so.
Well, I think the, yeah, and what we had talked about and what I know about it, Nance Field will not get to play that the field right beside the gym will get. And it was brought to my attention that indoor play, as many people and as many tournaments as you could have, if it was rained out, you can move them inside the gym.
That is the benefit of Biz is we can...
You've got more and lights shouldn't be much of a problem because we have got the lights out there or we got the poles out there.
At, at Miss?
No.
At Nance?
Yeah, at Biz, Biz.
The location we're looking at, there's no lights out there.
Yeah, down the line where the house, back up to the house, there's, no, there would have to be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you've got the power and you can add the lights out there. You have no parking at Nance Field, no light to do.
Both, both parks will need parking reassessed. Cause where we're putting the courts, even at Biz, right now it's just open area. We want to figure out something there, it's pretty unlevel, so.
If you look in the back of the packet at Nance, I have implemented where parking would go. So, the old baseball field would no longer be in use and you can turn that into a parking lot.
Yeah.
By knocking down the structures and taking out the curb.
And they're also not using Nance right now.
And we use it, it's all, it's all just wasted.
Yeah, I understand that and I don't think it would be used any if you put it back there, I mean...
Can I ask why you say that?
That's because you, you just, there's not that many people that go out there especially for pickleball.
Okay. Personally, I travel and play pickleball in a lot of places and a lot of my places are off anywhere. People that play pickleball play pickleball anywhere.
Yeah.
It's right off the exit of ninety-five, you make a ride, you go behind subway. It's easily accessible, if it does rain out, we got two blocks over the Biz, so it's not that far to get to if we do need to use the gym.
There's also being promised, I mean, we have that open space at Nance and if they're not using the baseball field, then this is another option. And Aaron has also thought about doing a second dog park. So, you could do a small dog run right there as well, you have plenty of space. And then you have parking established, you know, not, not like right now, but maybe down the road, you could do that second dog park. Because currently, what we see at the dog park over at the hotel is Hotel Stay or Ninety-five. You don't get a lot of residents that go there. So, that's an option that they've discussed as well. You keep in mind what's...
If you're not using, if you're not using the, if you're not using the walk-in, why am I selling it?
Well, they just, I mean, it just got established.
Everything just didn't look like it.
Everything just moved to be, it just opened your stuff.
Sorry, I mean, we aren't looking at, again, this was, we have been looking at is what we can use it for, it's just...
And using it as a soccer field out there.
They do, I mean, it says, and they use it as a soccer field.
Yeah, I mean, people use, we don't run any program with it.
Well, if we got two parks, I don't see why we don't utilize both of them if we can. And if it doesn't make any difference where the pickleball is being played at, I suggest Nance's park.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Aaron as far as if you put the course there, pickleball players, I don't know if, you know, up to date with pickleball, but they're gonna, they're gonna go play there if there's roads, that's what I mean.
And if you look at it from a financial standpoint, again, there's already lights there, there's already...
And if you look at it from a financial standpoint, again, there's already lights there, there's already a bathroom.
Yeah.
Maybe we come up with a capital improvement program and update stuff as we go, as far as the playground or dog park, fences and stuff like that. But, I don't know if you know how much lights cost, I was just in a conference with Musco, and lights aren't cheap.
No.
Or what? Six figures.
They're very expensive.
Yeah.
And if we keep pickleball separate at Nance on the weekends, if we have somebody want to use that area for a pickleball tournament, and somebody is still wanting to use the VS for a softball tournament or a baseball tournament, you can run both of them concurrently, and you're not gonna have twice the population trying to get into VS at once for two simultaneous tournaments. It kind of helps that separation between the two.
Because we already have a parking issue with this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you've been to, you've seen it, it's crazy.
So pickleball's pretty popular.
Very popular. That's a strong sport.
So you need a, what do you, as a recommendation?
The location.
The location.
Yeah.
I recommend that, I recommend that we use the Nance's field. Anybody else?
I recommend we use the other, because that's what the planning board for air Parks and Rec Board had looked at and decided on.
Yeah, and Matt, Matt did say to me to tell y'all if that come up, that, you know, I guess, he, he, his mind has kind of changed since the conversation about lights and bathrooms. I guess maybe that didn't come up in that, in that meeting.
It, it, it did.
Yeah.
And who's wanting it out there, who'd you say?
Where?
Who, who were y'all just saying that want, they wanted it out there?
The Parks and Rec.
The Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay.
They originally, they originally had thought about VS.
Yeah.
And I was kind of the one that brought up Nance, because you're not using it.
There's no more facilities we create, the more we're gonna have to pay to maintain them over time. That's my only concern. We put it in Lee Street, and we're not using Nance Field, I don't know why we don't sell Nance Field, why we listed all the rest of those extra town properties that aren't being used. We could then move it toward lights or parking lot or something else to improve Lee Street.
And if we're moving the whole entire Parks and Rec to Biz Park with the new building that we're fixing to hopefully start on, that we've got the money for.
Yeah.
We're spreading out again. We've got an area, and that's gonna be another, I reckon egg in their basket if we can put that out there to get the whole thing paid. Because that's all I hear from anything, any Parks and Rec that goes on, all the softball games, everything that comes up is, the parking lot is absolutely awful.
But you're still gonna have fields over here, so we're not, I mean, even when Parks and Recreation moves, you're still gonna have fields to maintain here at Civic Center. So, if you're still not.
So why have three? Why have three places, why don't we use just two?
I mean.
We've got a building right here that we're gonna have to take care of too, just like everything else will.
It's up to y'all.
I just spent a lot of evenings out there, working. I, I see the parking, I see the crowds. If everything's going at once, that's chaos, that's too many people wanting location. Again, the parking is horrible as it is, with just our, with our events. But then you start adding a whole nother element of pickleball, and a whole nother crowd of pickleball. Again, Forty and Ninety-Five, if people are gonna stop, they travel, because people do it all the time. I was in New Bern last week, and I stopped at three different parks where they pick them. It happens. It's just better space-wise, and for us, me specifically, having to be out there all the time for it to be separate.
Yeah, if we were to have a, a tournament, some, some on the ballfield, and the gym and pickleball going there, there's nobody, we'd have no park.
No, there's people parking on the side where they have the Buoyade's campsite, which is a hazard.
And that, that's just during, that's awful.
You guys, police, I mean, if something were to go down, how would we get anywhere? We all, it's all in one spot. Can you have pickleball tournament?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the concern, and if they wanted to book the same weekend, then you got everybody in one spot. There's current problems, but.
But if they must go to Biz, then they can, but we have to figure out lights and parking, and we go come.
So you, let me ask you something. So you are saying, if we use VS over there, we're gonna have to put up some new lights and stuff? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Yes, we are, yes.
Is that not an expense?
Yes.
Yes.
And who pays that expense?
It would, well, that's not included in what Dr. Biz has agreed to pay.
Yeah, he's just covering it.
So it has to come into consideration.
Chief, from a safety standpoint, I mean, you've heard the conversation. What's your input as far as like, if there was to have like, multiple games going on over at the Biz Park?
Well, if, if you've got two different mega events going on at one time at Biz Park, clearly it's gonna be an issue with, with obstructing traffic on Lee Street, just a, just your normal softball tournament. The Lee Street is, is parked on both sides. I, I can only imagine that adding another, a secondary tournament of pickleball, it is gonna, will, will move traffic further towards Main Street. Yeah, so you're gonna have a, a parking nightmare, and getting up and down that road is gonna be very, very difficult.
What's the board's recommendation?
Well, my recommendation is on the floor.
You have to, you go, you do it in the form of a motion.
In the form of a motion. I make a motion that we move the pickleball field to Nance's facilities.
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
What would you?
Aye.
It's three to two.
Three.
Say, say, I would just confirm that.
Okay.
It's three to two.
All right, so let's confirm that.
Aye.
Four to two.
Aye.
Four to two. Thank you.
All right, and next we're gonna consider a propos, approval of the police salary. Kayla Scott.
Good evening, everyone. So after our conversations, after the last meeting, we also have talked to the police department as a whole. We had a meeting with all of the employees, and kind of discussed what we had agreed upon in our meetings, what kind of the consensus was after all the conversations. What we are now proposing to you all, the solution that we've come up with, is that ten percent across the board for current employees, as well as the hiring rate for the new positions, the implementation of two new patrol sergeants, because that gives us the option to have four squads, the better scheduling options, the better shifts, which is a benefit that is not a cost benefit, but it is a life improvement benefit based on what a lot of the other departments around here can provide. And additionally, what was talked about in the meetings is a progression plan and a certification incentive plan. We separated the two out, because we really want to focus on creating an internal promotion progression plan, so that these officers, when they come, they can start to work their careers from the bottom to the top. They know what is laid out for them, what's expected. And alongside that, hand in hand, will be the certification incentives to clearly incentivize training, growth, to reward the dedicated employees that are gonna stay here and work their careers with the town incentive. So after all of our conversations, does anyone have any more questions?
The pay, pay, pay grade.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you determine that, that's what I wanted.
So the salary grade table itself predates me, it was set with the MAP study, if I'm correct. Yes, yes? The MAP study, and that is where the salary grades were set at that time. There have been conversations with Scott, HR, all of us, that the salary grade table itself needs to be looked at and adjusted. But that was bigger than this one proposal, because if you start adjusting one or two positions and not looking at the rest of the salary grade table, the disparity gets even worse. So that's why right now we're just doing the percentage, so that when, whether we have somebody come in and look at it again, or we do internal comparisons with the surrounding areas, we can adjust the table in its entirety to how it should be laid out. But we have had conversations that the current salary grade table itself, for the town as a whole, is probably not laid out as accurately as it should be.
And that MAP study, let me think, was that in twenty, that's, that wasn't twenty fifteen, was it?
No, no, no.
No, no.
It's, it's the one we just did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we implemented it, but we did not do a COLA that year. So, you know, we, we were probably already a little bit behind if we didn't do the COLA, because the MAP study results were from like, ah, February?
March.
March, and then we did the budget, you know, obviously, in July. And then everybody's salaries were adjusted based off the MAP study, and then we didn't do a COLA, so.
And there was no COLA in July of twenty twenty-four, so effectively, we're two years behind on COLA.
Are you getting, are you getting evaluations and performance raises, raises based on performance?
Yes, in the past, the max was five percent. Well, depending on the budget, but a lot of times it's between three and five percent for mayor.
But my understanding of the budget for this upcoming January is coming in five percent.
Yeah, right, so instead of the.
Is that across the board, or is that the same performance?
Performance. No, it's a, if you did a full. Performance, yes, if you're not in a PIP, it's a one and a half percent across the board.
Basically. No, it's, you can get anywhere from zero to one point five percent.
So that, that would be a COLA, would that be more like performance?
No, it was, it's, if you, it's, the way it was presented in the budget packet is that it's a one and a half percent if you meet your evaluation. There is not currently a tiered from one to two, from one to one and a half. That, I, there are benefits, and that is how they eventually would like to be laid out. That wasn't the initial layout in the budget. Again, we have up to one and a half percent that was already budgeted, so that can be adjusted even now. The reason it was the lower percentage is because when we can get together and work on the evaluation process and redo that as a whole, you set in a lower annual merit, if you know, percentage from your evaluation, that the board can vote on and say, you're right, every year we should be able to float one, two, whatever that max is. And so it's guaranteed, the employees know that every year with their evaluation, they're getting a set percentage, even if we don't get a COLA, even if we don't get an outside increase on the salary grade tables a whole, they know they can count on a small percentage every year with their evaluation. That was the thought process between that amount versus the larger, up to five percent with the subjectivity.
So is that something that we're looking at doing, if we take our evaluation process to come up with some kind of scale that says, depending on your performance, you're up to zero to five percent or whatever?
I wouldn't, personally, if you're asking my opinion, I would not go that high, because that's not.
I'm not saying the rate's not that high.
Right.
Is that, is that something, instead of we're just, I feel like we're just getting raises and tossing boards, and I'm gonna step on toes.
Well, no, everybody has a progression plan. But, so that would help as well. But to what you're saying, like, yes, everybody wants to be able to have, based on your evaluation. But in turn, with that, we have to reformulate, and we're having, we have to get the evaluation to a place that, while evaluations are subjective, there needs to be a little more consistency across the board with the grading and the scoring, and that comes from the evaluation process and the evaluation that was given itself. So yes, ideally, the goal is to get to where, based on your score and your evaluation, you receive a percentage, whatever that percentage is deemed to be. It's just.
But right now, we're just doing annual evaluations on all of the, money's not tied to that evaluation. The money's only tied to the budget that we approve.
This year, it was just a one and a half with your evaluation. Previous budgets in years, it was subjective, based on.
Your budget.
Your score and the budget, I think, yeah.
I have a question, if I have one.
Well, I think it's gonna, eventually, you're gonna, like, we talked about in the meeting with you all. Because this is what's gonna happen. If something doesn't change here, you're gonna have people coming in, making eventually more than cheap. That's what's gonna happen, and that is not good.
Agreed.
And, and, and so, maybe the human resource and might need to get a committee together to come up with something, or figure out some kind of ways to get a grade and a level that you pay these people. I know we talked about it in the meeting, a progression process.
Right.
And that's gonna have to happen, because if not, we, we, we're gonna be playing catch-up forever.
Right.
And losing forever.
And, you know, we were joking, but Billy this morning, he brought up, he said it was virgin, what, seventy-two and a half of the current, you know, they're revamping it after our conversations. As soon as Chief and Billy are happy with that, they're gonna get it to Scott and HR. They are going to hash out how the progression plan and the certification increase plan are laid out, because that's kind of gonna be the working document, the template for Scott to be able to lay it out for the rest of the town. Right, and that's gonna be the, clearly, each department and each position will be very different, but that will be the baseline of working documents for them to be able to go forward with those. But I, I can wholeheartedly assure all of you that there's been a lot of work put into it already, but we didn't want to slap something on paper and present it tonight for approval without being able to put the due thought into it.
I can tell you I like it playing a whole lot better than what we sell basketball.
Yeah.
Weeks ago.
I like it.
The police feel the same way about this, I know y'all had a departmental meeting, and the employees in favor of this.
They're, they're very excited about the prospect of force law, very excited.
I said it in the meeting, and I said it in the, I'd like everybody to make a hundred thousand dollars a year, and all of them make two hundred thousand. You can't do it, we'll always play catch-up. We did it two years ago when we set in, and why did it take Smithfield? Three weeks to raise everything, and we dropped from number two back to number six, and now we're two towards the bottom. It's gonna keep, if we don't have something, and you don't lose in any department, I don't care what department it is, you do not lose employees always just because of salary. And this is something I want the police department to get through their hands, and every other department. I think there ought to be some kind of exit program that we have that the board can get back involved in it, because when a police officer leaves, and he goes to HR and says, this is why I'm leaving. I'm not leaving because of the salary, I like it here, but I don't like this. I think it needs to come back to us. Now, I've been told, it's, if it goes to personnel, then it can't come back to us. There's got to be something that we can put in when a person is hired, whether it's police or anybody else, that they have, look, this is what the town does, this is their policy. We've got an exit policy, and if you decide to leave for any reason, we would like you to do this, and it will not be unnoticed.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can do that or not.
I do exit interviews every time somebody leaves the software too. We can't require them to do it, basically.
You can't, you can't require them.
But he does, he does.
No, I mean, they're leaving, we can't require, we can't do anything.
If he requires it and they don't do it, what are you gonna do?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the question.
It's optional.
Fire him.
The information I give from the, from the exit interview does relate to management.
Yeah.
Okay, so management can bring it to us?
Well, I, that's a question for Ike, because that's personnel, so.
See, that's what I'm saying.
I'm very clear that when people are leaving, and I'm conducting an exit interview with them, unless they give me the permission to share it, it can't help anything. And also, I can't provide that information to management, we don't have a thousand people a month leaving. So I can't crawl that information into one general synopsis and give it to management. They know if you have a police officer left last month. And I give that information, you know who it can't. And most people say, yes, I don't care if you share that with the management. I mean, they're, they hold some people who replace your lead.
The most, the most recent police officers that left have actually come and had a conversation with me, Kayla, in our office, which deemed the, the department meeting that happened.
which deemed the, the department meeting that happened last week. So, we're talking to them for sure, but I think when it got back to.
Nobody's talking to us, so you can't, you can't, you can't share that with us?
We did talk, I mean, we have said some things to you guys, but, I mean.
Are you, the question is, are you talking about in generalities? If, if the manager or H R or together or management comes and, and gives you general information about concern for why people are leaving? Certainly, you know, or you could request of your manager or management, I want you to bring the, I'm concerned about turnover or longevity or keeping people employed or have too many people leave and ask. I want you to give me a report about that without getting into specifics about an employee, I don't see any problem with that. If you're gonna get into this, the absolute specifics about what some particular employee has said, first of all, you need to be in closed session and there needs to be a valid reason for that. And, 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 I mean, I could strain to come up with scenarios of how that might be legal and valid, but across the board, it would be unwieldy and, and, and potentially very problematic legally because what if those people don't want their personal, I mean, they're entitled to have that confidentiality under statute that there's anything in their personnel file.
The worst thing I can do is violate confidentiality of an employee. I'll lose, I'll lose all credibility with each and every one of these employees that will.
Again, but, but if it's generalities, if it's, look, we've had a lot of turnover in, in a particular department. I've met with that department head and some other supervisors or whatever, and here's what I'm hearing about, you know, without getting into any particular individual's situation where we're gonna talk about them personally, why this one left or why this one wasn't happy, just, just in general, we think it's because of salary or it's because, uh, you know, too much stress or we don't have enough resources or whatever. And then I, I don't see a problem, that's just, that's just a good discussion about from your management and you as a board as to what you need to work on, but.
Well, I brought this up when we had a, a meeting before and I didn't think anyone was interested because it was told to let the manager handle, um, issues dealing with the employees. I did bring it up, I've emailed it, I've said it before, but now when employees, and I'm H R person, but when employees leave, no, you, we don't want their names, you know, just give scenario, you know what I'm saying? You don't, because I know you cannot disclose a name, um, as far as.
But if you're gonna know who it is.
Well, I, I wonder if you could do it in the sense that not, well, actually, I probably wouldn't know because I don't know all employees, when I hear somebody's gone, I don't, can't even remember them anyway, unless they've been here a long time, but the ones that are coming and leaving in a short period of time, half the time I don't even know them unfortunately. But I'm just wondering, with these exit interviews, Scott don't have to really tell us right away. He could, you know, wait a series of months or so and just, you know, give us some scenarios, not necessarily immediately when they leave. You know, just, just some scenarios of this is what the employees are saying, not, you know, being specific.
My, I report to the management.
Right, I understand that, if Kim can bring it to us.
I would disclose whatever I would disclose me to, well, that we have disclosed, but we, we're playing with fire with this small of a staff.
Yeah.
And I start giving information or Kim starts giving direct information. I mean, we can break it down into why did, you know, over six months, what are the reasons people leave?
Right.
But I can tell you what's happening in this form will be very different than what's happening in the electric. So it's not gonna do you a lot of good unless, that, that is my job is to analyze that stuff and provide it to management.
Well, I'm not asking you to provide it to us, but thi- this is, let me, let me put a scenario out to y'all as board members. We have employees approaching us, I'm not their manager, um, I'm not their H R person, but when they start approaching you in public, that's another issue within itself. And, you know, it's told to us where the board really doesn't care because y'all allow blah, 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 blah. We don't allow, we're not even supposed to get involved, but this is the things that maybe should stay within, with your department. But when you, when you get these phone calls and when you get people stopping you in public, what are you supposed to, I mean, I'm not gonna ever say anything against the town, but you gotta show some concern as a board member because at the end of the day, the board is actually, um, you know, we're, we have to make sure that, you know, the town is being ran properly.
Right.
So as a board member, what are you to do when you have employees that come to you and say X, Y, and Z, and this is what's going on? That, that puts us in a bad situation as well, when they feel like they can't talk to manager. So I'm just trying to direct everyone back to you guys because there's nothing as a board currently that we can do anyway.
Tell you what I do, when I get emails and everything stops sending, if I get an email from a town employee, every time I reply, I C C Kim.
See, I don't get an email.
Because the way I look at it.
I don't get an email.
He'll also send me the text message, like.
I send it, if I get a text message, I send it to Kim and I hope that's okay, but at the end of the day, I don't want, I love all y'all employees, but I don't wanna deal with y'all because if we got five people that walk out tomorrow, it's her fault, my mind.
Yeah.
I don't care what's going there, it's her fault. She, she gets paid the big money, the big wage, right? And, and we're, she's on, we, we can fire her, you know, she's the only one we can hold accountable. And so, and, I mean, that's, that's just the way I feel about it. I mean, but, but I'm, I'm not a psych, I'm not a psychologist either, I don't wanna hear you wrong.
Well, I don't think it's a matter of hearing the problems, I think it's a matter of being concerned because at the end of the day, the taxpayers do elect you to represent them. And I think in representing people, you need to have a listening ear, even though you might can't do anything about it, but you're supposed to get them listening and give them an idea because they, they elected you to do that. Now, if they.
Citizens did, not employees, the citizens did.
Yeah, the citizens did, but when they're complaining about what's going on, if you don't know what's going on, then I, it, it's got to be, I, I, and I agree with you, there's got to be some kind of connection between the board and these different departments, it's gotta be, it's just got to be.
The department.
What we talked about in, I can't, what, what, we, we, when we had our meeting last week and, and we talked about changing our board meetings.
Yes.
To where we have booming meetings once a month.
Yes.
And then the next meeting on the month, we can sit down with the police department director or the public works director and we can make a working, you know, we can have these conversations directed with the director, you know, man.
Yes.
I don't want to, if she's planning on bringing that in.
Yes, I'm gonna bring, we, we're gonna bring it in November, I didn't have time to. Because y'all approved the schedule, but I have to change the schedule and so I just, I, it's on that. So we're gonna do that in November, but your, your first Tuesday will be a work session where you sit down and you discuss, you know, kind of what the, the meat of the meetings are gonna be, and then you give us approval to put it on consent. And you can, you can sit down and talk about the, the, um, department head reports that you get, ask those questions and, and then the, the actual meeting that we hold, public comment, would be essentially approving the consent, which is business as y'all have already discussed, and then public comment and planning board, so.
And that would give you time to get me an agenda a week before a meeting?
Yes.
Get it today.
Sorry. And I, I do wanna say, uh, sorry, my first mistake, that any, anything that any employees are bringing to us and bringing to our attention, I can say that anything that's been brought to me has been. Yeah. A concern to me and I've looked at and I haven't looked into those situations. Um, what the outcome may be on either side, you know, it just depends on the situation. But anybody who has come as of late and is comfortable enough to talk to us, all of those situations, I just want to relay, they are being taken seriously and they are being looked into. Um, and I think that's why now maybe more, there's, there's more of a, I hate, not revolving door, but open door. People are coming in and just having more conversations with administration, but also, again, if they see you guys in the community here, right, they're always just gonna stop in. But if, and I said this to everybody, but if, if you talk to any employees, please always feel free to direct them. We are always open for these conversations, but Scott, his, his door is always open, but Kim and I, we want to have these conversations because just like you guys are hearing about it, if we don't hear about it, we can't look into it and see if there is or is not a problem and what the best solution is, yeah.
I'm gonna go back in and say that I really like this police plan a whole lot better than the one I saw a couple of weeks ago. Um, I understand that we have enough lap salaries and this is not anything that's had a budget that our current budget covers this. I feel like we invested in new people in the fire department as we're growing, I think we should do with the police, just more people on the streets. I made the most money with it.
All in favor, Sam? Oh, I, those, those opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, mural, I got a puzzle for you, it's a small old travel mural, you gotta print it out, it's got all the info on. It's the same artist that did the gem, so you know it's gonna be good, we got him ready to go, art board recommends approval. Um, it's a big hummingbird, it's on half a building. Uh, so, yeah, we're excited about it, uh, he's very excited, he's actually doing a, a mural in Smithfield, I think it is, it's like a big sweet potato. And after he's done with that, he can start in early November, one falls, so. We just need your blessing.
But this is being paid for by Joko Tourism, it can be a text.
That is correct.
I want that to be known. I made motion to approve.
Wait a minute, that, where you put, where you wanted, you said you wanted to put it out.
Small world travel.
It looked like, um, Las Vegas.
He's gonna be in Small World Travels, Small World History.
Yeah, yeah.
So the plan for the art board is, um, they had a budget to do kind of a large mural, which is, which is Paul Boucher's building, and then they'll do a very small, um, interactive situation at the, um, at the alley. It'll be very small.
Yeah, so they, they split this mural, it was originally the whole wall, we just did half, and we'll take the rest of the funds and do something in such a way.
I, the contract on this, the contract on this and the painter doing it, are we still, are we still good with that?
What, I'm sorry, I had two people talk to me.
Sorry, he asked me.
The contract, the contract reads that if the painter gets halfway through or something and something happens to him, then that person or the town will be responsible for.
So Paul has, Eric, I'm assuming you've talked to Paul?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so Paul has, um, on Tuesday gave me like a red line of the contract, I was just telling him. So I'll get that to Ike so he can look at it, but, um, Paul has some concerns with some of the worry.
I was gonna ask that.
I think it was mainly like, wasn't it mainly after the mural is finished, it's like, you don't know.
It's my responsibility.
Yeah, it's like, you're building on his responsibility after a certain.
My building, I've got, it's my responsibility to fix it out of my pocket.
Yeah. So, and then supposedly you decide not to do it.
Then I'm, then I, then I, after a certain number of years, I think it's seven years or something like that, I, then I can take white paint, paint right up again. But I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a year term that says if I'm allowing them, if they're expected to put the mural on there and after it's painted, if someone goes and graffitis it, then it's my responsibility to fix it or cover it.
And now some artists have policies where they'll come back at a certain period of time and do touch up and stuff like that, some don't, so, you know, it's not in a contract.
Use the same one for the sculpture, don't you?
So essentially, it goes, it goes as long as, as perpetual until the property or can don't our care for the mural or the arts advisory board determines it should be painted over.
Is it the same one that I got?
Should be.
Should be, it ought to have a year service on there. How would, any of them? Now, your, your terms is. They came back, or they could come back, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, your term is to have it installed, I believe.
You're good with it?
I wrote it. But that's, that's the need, I'm good with it.
That's even more reason I'm good, good with it now.
I, 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 it's always good back to good review, but, uh, I'll, I'll work with Mr. Boucher about whatever concerns he has with the agreement, with it.
Okay.
This is just approving us to move forward in the contract, so, I mean, he can back out at any time.
If there's an issue with that or we need to do it, I can always, uh, bring that before you in my time at a later meeting or if it's just perfunctory, put it in consent, at least you can see if there's some amendment to it.
I make a motion we move forward.
Those in favor, Sam?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving along. Next, um, review of, uh, results from the softball tournament, Kim Pickett?
Um, so as you all can see, we did fairly well, softball tournament that we had a couple of months ago. Um, we got total, um, twenty thousand nine fourteen in gate fees. The Tar Hill League cut was fifty-four forty-four, um, so our take from the gate fees was fifteen thousand four seventy. Um, we sold merchandise, but we also had to buy the merchandise to sell, so you see that the, um, the net profit on that was fifty-six fifty-three. Um, we had some issues with our, um, our food vendors, they were supposed to give us a percentage. Um, we were only able to collect, uh, from two, and so we have put the other ones on a, a list that we're not gonna utilize them anymore because they, um, did not follow through. And then, um, we just had generalized expenses, um, in the amount for, you know, passes and armband, stuff that we had to do, um, that was part of our contract with the Tar Hill League. Those expenses were nine thousand six thirteen forty-five, so all in all, our gross, our total amount that we made off the tournament that weekend was eleven thousand three seventeen twenty-one.
And then every weekend?
I know, right? Um, I, again, I, I've said this, uh, after the tournament, but I wanna commend Aaron and I wanna commend Tim because they did an exceptional job. Um, I have seen some of the members of the Tar Hill League since that weekend and they still rave about how wonderful our staff was, how, um, quickly they got the fields dry after we had a wet, um, first day and, um, they just, they could not talk about how great they were. So I do anticipate they will come back, um, but just like cycle and see, they're on a rotation and so, um, it won't be next year, but hopefully in the next, you know, five.
I think we did good, Ben, it's the.
Yeah.
All right. Next, um, we're gonna have a review of the revenue expenses as a result from, results from meal day, twenty twenty-four, Kim?
Yep, so, um, you guys have the recap for meal days. Um, we had a loss of ten thousand sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, that is more than we lost last year, last year it was about seven thousand dollars. Um, but also last year, we basically had a day where it rained and we sent people home, um, because there wasn't a lot of people out, so. Um, better than it was when I got here ten years ago, but still in the red at the end of the day, so.
How did the income, how did the gross income change from last year?
It was, uh, seven, if you give me half a second, I can tell you what it was.
I think when I first got on this board, we were losing about thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
Went a little bit or not.
Oh, yeah.
It's thirty for years.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Tim.
Meal days, we see. In twenty twenty-two, we had a net loss of eleven thousand two ninety-three. In twenty twenty-three, we had a net loss of seventy-eight fifty-two, and then this year we were at ten thousand sixty.
Income, is the golf cart income up? I mean, is that what we're? I'm trying to see what we're making money on.
So, yes, last year our income was fifty-five thousand seven eighty-six and our income this year was sixty thousand eighteen twenty-two. So maybe we went up on, um, permit fees. Um, so that definitely helped. And golf carts, we went up on, we didn't go up this year, we went up like two years ago, sixteen, I don't know that we did.
Did the exact same number, golf cart.
Which is crazy, yeah, yeah.
But the only thing, last year, twenty twenty-three was a total washout.
Right.
Everybody, vendors, everybody lost.
Yeah.
Because it rained and they couldn't do anything.
Yeah, in twenty twenty-two, our revenue was fifty-five two oh three. So, I mean, our revenues were up, but our, you know, our expenses were up as well, so.
Any more questions? Okay, and consider approval of financials, Kim and Kristen?
So Kristen's here. Um, I just want, we've been doing a lot of training, um, she's been in my office. Essentially, she's been planning in there for the last two days, we've done some on and off training throughout her time being here, but, um, so I'm gonna give you these reports tonight and then I'm gonna turn Kristen over to you guys for the month of October. Um, but for the month of July, our revenues were at six percent and our expenditures were at seven. They should have been at eight. For the month of August, our revenues were at fourteen percent and our expenditures were at fifteen. Um, and for the month of August, they should be at sixteen. And for the month of September, I have it in here, hold on. We were twenty-five percent revenues and twenty-three percent expenditures, so we're starting to see that flip. Um, and for the month of September, we should be at twenty-five percent. And for the month of September, we should be at twenty five percent. So, we have actually started getting some of our tax money in already, which is nice. We can give you a better breakdown. It's on, I don't have it on my computer anymore. It's on Kristen's computer. But we are starting to see some of our tax revenue already triple in. I want to say for the month of August, we got over two hundred thousand was what it was today. So.
Kim, how hard would it be to, I think I'd asked you before, to put it in here today from last year, September, October, and then we can compare where we were last year to what's coming in and what's going out? Give us some kind of.
Kristen says she's got you. Yeah. She's got you. She's got a way that she's.
I've got a template.
She's got a template that she's gonna use next month that she's used for several years in, in her old job. And so, she'll bring that to you guys, and you kind of look at how she's gonna present it to you. And if you want anything changed after October, you just, you let her know at that meeting. That'll be, but she said she's got you on that for sure.
I know, I get a P and L report from my accountants and been doing it for thirty years, and the spreadsheet, I can look at last year, the same month, exactly my expenses, everything, and exactly my income and what water and sewer is running, and the homework. And it really helps me to know what's going on.
Okay. We got you.
Thanks for the balance sheet and that information.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. And we just need a motion to approve all three?
I made a motion to approve all three.
All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? All right, down now to Town Manager Report. Kim Pickett?
So, tomorrow night is our very busy event, usually Hallow Fest. We will be starting to close Main Street at five. If you're gonna have a trunk, you need to be at the gym. You should have got your pass today. You need to be at the gym starting at four thirty, and then we'll trickle onto Main Street as soon as they get everybody closed. We will do the same as we've done the last couple of years, where we'll offset the vehicles down the center of the, of Main Street, starting at Dr. Rayner's office all the way to Jennings. And we're very, very excited. How many vehicles do you have, you know?
Thirty-six or thirty-seven.
So, we're gonna have a, a great turnout. We're also closing Railroad Street like we did for Cycle and Sea. Y'all, y'all approved that closure when you approved Cycle and Sea's closure, and we will have food trucks on Railroad Street on the Fanning Go cornerstone side. So, it's gonna be a great event. We're very, very excited. November second, we have the Run the Brave five K, and we have our Veterans Day celebration, where we will have a parade. I can tell you that Ms. Susan Wallace has worked very, very hard in the last year. We have met continuously every single month to have conversations about this event. And they have, every year, it gets bigger and bigger. And so, she's very, very excited, and we hope everybody can come out and join in on that. November eleventh, town offices will be closed. And then, very quickly, I just wanted to give the board a couple of updates. You all hopefully saw the email that I sent today that insurance did deny our claim on the building, which I told you that was probably gonna happen, and, and it was due to the timeframe and how long it's likely been leaking and what they've seen. I do have, as I've stated to you guys in the email, halo roofing is coming the first week of November. They are going to fix the, the underside that, that kind of caved in. They also, while they were up there, I said, I need you to look on the other side because we're already seeing some lagging on the roof. So, there were some joints that were starting to rot over there as well. So, they are going to sure up that side as well. They're gonna kind of leverage it, ensure that hopefully we don't have this issue again in six months, and then they're gonna pull the roof back and they're gonna, they're gonna replace the roof. And so, that, that came in at fifty eight thousand dollars. That's where I'm starting. My budget was a hundred. So, I haven't done anything else other than that because I'm afraid of what they're gonna find when they pull the roof back. So, we have dried out the rooms. So, when they come at the first of November and they fix all that, then we'll start mitigating the, the room behind the stage and the classroom in the conference center. But as I stated in the past, we have already tore out the carpet. We have torn out the ceiling tiles. We took out the wet insulation. So, the classroom in and of itself is dry because we've, we ripped all that out internally. Our coworkers staff did that. Also, we had a couple of, of people come to the last board meeting to discuss their, like, their water bills. We have had a conversation with Tucker Lake. We are likely going to start having a conversation. I think they're gonna have to be treated maybe how we treat a wholesale customer because it is their pipe and it is their meter. And it's, they're just an odd duck in that sense. And so, we are talking internally. We need to get with Ike and discuss how maybe we can do a contract with them in regards to selling the, or to doing sewer at a, at what it costs for us to treat, similar to how we treat, like, four oaks for Johnson County. So, we've had those conversations. Power of Praise, we are, I've been digging in minute books, so we don't have fee schedules in the office prior to twenty fourteen. They were not in the budget books like they are now. So, I've been going through the minutes of the board meetings since two thousand and one, and I've been getting, writing those numbers down, and I finished that today as, and really what I have is percentages of, they've had a percentage increase here and a percentage increase there. So, I wrote all those down, and I'm basically gonna have to start at fourteen and work my way back pulling those percentages out. So, we're still in the process of working on that. We've talked with Ms. Laverne today. We told her as soon as we had our numbers, we would get it to y'all and we would get it to her. So, we still don't have a, a recommendation on that yet, but we are working on it. And then, I sent you an email about Ms. Alfred. So, I still have not been able to make contact with her. But if y'all talk to her, let me know.
How, how long has it been since you heard from her since the last meeting?
Yeah.
How long, her bill's on hold, right?
Ms. Alfred or Power of Praise? Power of Praise was on hold, I believe.
Ms. Alfred paid hers.
Yeah, Ms. Alfred paid hers.
Okay.
Yeah. Power of Praise was on hold, and we've been, we've talked to her pretty much every day. But I have, I have made four attempts to contact, and she's made an attempt and cannot get in touch with her. We've left messages, so.
Turning to the VFA?
I talked with Ms. Loretta. They had a meeting last night, so I'm not sure what the meeting was, what was discussed last night at their meeting, but I have been keeping Anita and Lindsay up to date on the building. And they, they've said that they would be willing to help in any way. They have, let's see, I think fifteen dollars. You ready for me? Go ahead.
If I may speak?
Yeah.
We decided to wait. We're not making any plans for the twenty twenty five season yet until we see what happens with the building. But we still are willing to give money to re, to fix up the shop.
Yeah.
Which is where the saw was, the lumber and everything. We have fifteen thousand dollars set aside to do that, and we can even get our contractors if we have to. So, turning on the air conditioning was the best thing you could have done because it's saving the seats and the curtains and the carpet. And we'll probably have the seats cleaned again and the carpet cleaned again, which we pay for all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ed.
Thank you. Nat, do y'all have any questions for me?
On that, is there any way that we can get a commercial contractor that does, I mean, a hundred thousand's not gonna touch what, what I think you're fixing to run into? But you can't get a regular contractor, I don't care how good he is, to go in and take a building like that. We've got a hundred and twenty-five-year-old left at this church where I decided we had to get a special person that does nothing but old churches to go in, and you've got ten by ten rafters in it, you've got copper roofed and stuff, and to put it back or to make, make it work, you have to get somebody that can walk through. I sure would love to see some kind of estimate on not just patching the building, but fixing the building because we're gonna run into that. There's gonna be a lot of people that comes up and says, you need to save the school. You're gonna have people that says you're gonna need to bulldoze the school. We've made no decision as a board sitting up here to hear what we have heard in the past. Social media, all of this other stuff, it will absolutely kill you because I didn't know really what was going on. And once we get this done, as far as even spending what money we're fixing to spend, whose responsibility is it to go? We own, what, four buildings? Whose responsibility is it? And if it's nobody's responsibility, we need to have that person once a month to walk in every room and every building that the town owns and make a note as to we've got a yellow spot on this ceiling and, and document that so we will not get in this situation on any building that we've got.
Okay, so let me unpack that. So, you don't want Halo to do the roof?
That's what I was saying.
Okay. But commercial contractor to do what exactly? That, to do the other part of it?
To go through the building, not, go through the building, go underneath the places that Halo's been and where I have been and seen what they have to work with and say, look, to do this, to do this, it's gonna end up costing the town or this building, y'all are gonna have to put fifteen million in it, or you're gonna have to put fifteen thousand in it. There's nobody that's been able to give us anything except this little part right here, what we may run into.
I mean.
I'm not saying this week or next week.
Yeah.
I'm saying reach out to some of these people, reach out to play. If they've redone their old school and find out who did that, and ask them if at some point in time could they come in and give us an estimated cost on.
Rehabbing the building.
So, everybody can get on the same page here.
So, rehabbing the building.
To rehab the building.
That's what I wanted to, like, when you say that, I'm thinking, are we not, do I need to hold off on what I'm doing currently?
No. We, William came up with it. To do what we're wanting to do, we're gonna have to have outside funds. It cannot come off the tax base of the town events. Okay?
Well, we're looking at either spending either one of those movies. I think we gotta get the public involved. I, I think that's what most officers are hearing is they're hearing that we're doing stuff and not asking anybody.
And I.
Whether we move town home?
Yeah.
Or whether we rehab where we're at, somehow or another, we've gotta do some workshops and get the public involved because it's their money, and that's not budgeted money that we're trying to.
And I think it's, you and I had this conversation, like, no decision's really been made other than, I came to you guys in July and said, are we paying thirty thousand dollars to fix the bottom part of the building or not? And y'all said no. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
But we're not on YouTube right now, and we're not on Facebook right now, and all the assumptions are.
Oh, I know.
And that's what we're trying to cross out is when people call us and say, what are you doing tearing down the old house? And it's not that we've decided.
But nobody said that, yeah.
But, agree, but, but we've got, we, we do have the sense to be more clear about what we're thinking about, I guess, because if we don't tell them, then they will assume.
Okay.
May I say one other thing? VFA board, we have, we have secured someone that likes grants and helps to find grants, and our board voted to have them get to work, and a couple of us are gonna be working to see if we can find some grant money some places, so to help out with this.
Yes, I can, we can work on that. And then, no, we do not have a person that goes through and, and helps at every building. Really, it, you, if you have a depart, like, public utilities building, for instance, that's something that you have three superintendents that are essentially sitting in that room and, or in that office building, and if there's an issue that arises, they, you know, they're to let us know immediately. But like, do we have somebody facility-wise that goes around to every single building? No, not.
Did you know what was on third floor?
Well, to me, the third floor is inhabitable, so I don't go on, I was told I could go. I don't go on the third floor, so, you know what I mean?
That's what I'm saying. Somebody, somebody could go once a month and say, look, we've got a problem in this ceiling right up here on the third floor. And then, you're made aware of it, and then you're not hit.
Right.
All at one time. But that's in any department. Is the department heads, I know with the fire department. We know when we've got to have tires on the truck, we know when we've got to have batteries changed out, we know everything about it because there's a checklist, but it's done within the department. I don't need anybody from maintenance to go over there and tell us. Same thing with the police department. Who looks at their vehicles?
They do, so that's, that's the department.
They who do?
So, and I know what you're getting at, and, and Greg has already informed me, but at the police department, if there's an issue with a vehicle, that police officer that drives that vehicle every single day needs to report that issue to their supervisor.
Absolutely.
So, in that particular case that you're referring to, I'm not a, I do not do, I, if, if I did everything that I've, that I've done in the, I wouldn't get anything done. So, I'm not your fleet manager. That is the department head's responsibility to ensure that their fleet is what they're supposed to be.
Hey, don't get defensive. That's what I'm asking.
No, no, I'm saying, but.
That is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
It needs to come back to somebody in that department.
But that, but that was not important.
And if it's up to the department, if it's up to the patrolman or whoever that's driving that vehicle, then it ought to be in their policy that that's what they do.
They have that in their policy.
No.
The police department has that, I mean, that, right? Y'all, they're told to tell you if there's an issue with the vehicle or they're.
Greg, Greg, your, your new officers that have just come on board, they have been told you are responsible for your vehicle and the tires and the, everything else on it?
Yes, they, 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 they should know they have been told.
They should know, but have, is it in policy?
It is written down, wrote down. Our, our policy book doesn't cover every policy scenario.
But those tires were replaced today.
Oh, I know. I was told. But look, I didn't have a dog in that fight. I was standing out there and somebody else said, I can write you a ticket. And I walked over there and felt fabric on the, on the tires on a officer, and she didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, I heard this week that I wouldn't buy a vacuum cleaner for somebody, and nobody's asked me to buy a vacuum cleaner. So, like, if I don't know, I don't know, right? That, I leave that to the department heads. But, yeah.
All right, Town Attorney Report?
I'm, I'm done there, done with me.
I don't really have anything. I, I will let Kim off the hook and apologize for the typographical error in the special call meeting notice. Everybody on the record, it's the Board of Commissioners meeting, especially Nate Stuzy, not the Planning Board. That was my fault. I drafted that for her. So, that is one thing that Kim cannot take responsibility for. Otherwise, if anybody has any questions, I don't really have to do such thing.
Okay. Is there any on Board of Commissioners report?
Excuse me, could we say something really quick?
Yes, sir. We want to thank you guys for allowing us to come and speak with you in the last several meetings. Thank you very much and consideration. You know, we're, we've been coming to these meetings basically because you haven't dissatisfied with your trash service and the representation you've been given. And from my recollection, there's been at least three occasions where you got some phone GFL that you were going elsewhere with your service. They didn't even bid on this contract when you put it out for bid, so.
Basically, we pointed out the attorney, the bids were supposed to be due the first week of September, and sometime between then and when it was presented to the board, they presented an amendment. Was that prior to the first of October? Because that's more than ninety days with their correspondence about the contract.
Eric, was there amendment before October first?
Well, yeah, because they, between the bids being submitted and the October fourteenth meeting where you got discussed it, you know, they had conversations, meetings with town staff about the contract, you know, being terminated. So, I don't know, was that prior to the ninety days or with it?
There was a lot of discussion that went on prior to the ninety days. I think the concern that the board raised, I won't speak for all of y'all, but you want me to, I will, uh, is that whether or not we attended to that technical requirement of notice in the contract.
Because at just some point between September sixth, when three, um, parties submitted bids and, you know, October fourteenth, you know, I didn't know what, I emailed correspondence or what was submitted for them to realize that they did a bid and that they come around and, you know, kind of force their hand on it.
I could answer that question. We didn't, now, when you think about it, it had somebody calling, so, nobody.
Well, I said this at the last meeting.
It was somewhere else.
I said this at the last meeting. We're not required to bid this contract. So the, the, the solicitation for bids was purely done to town to, to solicit more interest and to potentially get, uh, uh, you know, better competitive bids and prices uh, because they elected to, not because we're required to. For instance, if we're going to go and spend fifteen million dollars on town hall, we require to get bids out of the statutes that was just done because that's how they chose to do it. But, um, I appreciate y'all being here too, just for my part, and you've been very patient. Uh, but I think the concern is about the particulars of the contract that we're under is that that written notice was required.
That story I sent before response took place from September sixth, October first or after that? It's, at some point, you know, they did come here and.
I mean, I.
They apologized by, you know, I should be.
I'm not gonna get into more details than I should in an open meeting as a lawyer that represents the town as my client, but there was a lot of conversation that went back to, I think, March or February, March, early this year. So, um, but again, I think the concern that the board has is not to take a risky viewpoint of that. That fair?
I, I don't even know what to say.
Ask Julie and me if I need to hush because I'm not an attorney, but I can tell you that this is my standpoint of this. The question in my mind as one commissioner is, I don't know that we were noticed properly, properly to cancel a contract. And if we did not do that, then that is not on y'all, that is on my, that is on our staff, right? And that's another conversation that doesn't need to happen in book. And so, but with that question in my mind, if I were to make another decision, I will be putting the citizens in a liability. But I'm not willing to, when I know through my attorney and they can tell me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm pretty sure through my attorney, just because I put out a request for bid doesn't mean I have to accept it. We can ask for bids every month if we want to, but that doesn't mean as a board we ever have to accept one. And unfortunately for, for y'all and for, it may even us, depending on how the next year goes, it seems like we may be in another disservice for another year, but I bet we will make the same mistake if it was made this time. And I'm not saying it was, but I bet it won't be, I bet, I bet it'll be, I bet the bid will go out better in March than it did last time. I, I, I think I'm pretty confident in saying that. And, and unfortunately for me, when you're talking about taxpayer dollars and liability and lawsuits, the safe way is always the best way for the taxpayer.
And that's what we, we completely understand, we just send up there's email correspondence between the bids being submitted October first, which would be outside that ninety-day notice period.
But I can do a ninety-day notice anytime and never, never respond to a bid. So I, I can ask for bids every month and never actually have to accept one. I'm just asking to see what information is out there and I could have took your bids and said, and we could have reviewed the bids and never responded to any yawn, gay or nay. We could have just continued in our current contract if we wanted to.
He could.
Legally, right?
He could.
As an attorney. So, I mean, I think, again, I think the disservice, I think y'all have been very patient, y'all have been attentive. Um, I think that we know what we have now is not working in my opinion for our citizens. I think, I think some of the, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, I don't speak for myself, but I think given the circumstances I was given tonight and knowing other conversations that we've had in the liability and I, I'm just not willing to take that chance with taxpayer dollars, if that's the best way.
I should agree with you, I, I support that.
And, yeah, and so, and that's.
Hopefully we'll see you in twelve months.
March, March.
Thank y'all again. And if you have questions about it, you know, even if it's just a matter of a public records request, send them to me, send them to us and we'll send you whatever we can legally send you, because you're, I mean, it's public records, so.
Any other?
Oh, no, no.
Any other reports from the commissioners? I don't have.
I have one. I want to know what our, um, inspector, what, we have a new inspector for trash cans and stuff. Do you have anything on what they're doing?
Um, we have a code enforcement officer.
Yeah, what, what is he doing?
Mark, um, well, he has already started giving notices in regards to trash cans being pulled back. Um, he's focusing on trash cans, he's focusing on junk cars, grass, um, and signs. That's his, we said start small, which is not actually very small, it's a lot, there's a lot in those four things. Um, and, and kind of easing up to the other major things. Obviously, we have two buildings that Johnston County's already deemed, or already given back to us and deemed on, um, our decision on what we want to do moving forward. And so it is our, um, there's been some, some ways, some things that have changed in, um, code enforcement and demon something, um, what's the word I'm looking for, like, to get rid of? Yeah, and so Ike and Paul have been working through those procedures. You know, we used to have them up in the boardroom, um, of the steps that you have to take. And so they're working to get those procedures kind of written back out based on any new changes that have been made. Um, and so that's, that's going on as well. But as far as our code enforcement officer, those are the four things he's focusing on right now.
And I'd say, Julie, the, the procedure for like minimum housing violation or condemnation, I guess would be another way of referring to that, though that's not exactly what it is. Tearing down something that's in real bad dilapidated state is not markedly different than it was before the passage of one sixty D or the last time we really undertook a program of, of, uh, of addressing those issues, but, um, the timeline may be a little bit longer now, so. Paul's gonna, I've been working with Paul, getting y'all something to, I guess as best we can, give you an estimate of how long that's gonna take. And then I think, though, and I'll take every opportunity, I'm sure, uh, Paul would as well if he was here, to, to remind you that the financing of that, uh, program of minimum housing or nuisance payment and code enforcement or whatever you want to call it has gotten to be the first and the middle and the last consideration because it can get costly.
But I hope you have seen a change in regards to trash cans being pulled back because he's definitely given notices out.
Yeah, I've noticed, I, I have noticed that, but I, some of the cars, I, I want you to tell him to get on Hart Street.
For junk cars? Okay.
Wheel jockey.
Okay.
Hey, now, do you not have a mayor's report? So may I make a question to adjourn?
Yeah, I make a question at regent.
On the favor?
All right, why?